Yeah.
Set out there for a second. Now they're still there.
Yeah.
Oh, I saw where that was. Yeah, I see. That did it off. I'm glad you said that.
That's like, that's like there. I'll say that.
Brian, that's two blocks. Oh, one of those, yeah. After Jerry's letter.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to you. Uh, we want to welcome everyone to the April fifth, two thousand and sixteen meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that come before. May I ask everyone to please rise for a moment, stop the silence, and remain standing for the next. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
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 Bailey.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez. And President Grant.
Present. All right, so we're gonna deviate a little bit from our, uh, agenda this evening. And we're gonna start off with the resolution. Uh, it's Resolution fourteen, twenty sixteen. It's Resolution honoring the Whitehall Yearling High School Boys Basketball Team for their outstanding, uh, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen season.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution. I wish to suspend Resolution fourteen, twenty sixteen. I knew what this people thought. This is all for a whole time now, that's what I'm concerned about. Resolution fourteen, twenty sixteen.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Miss Coniston, a second by Mr. Grant for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution fourteen, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchman, please call it in.
Greg.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yeah.
Tanner.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rule's had been suspended on Resolution fourteen, twenty sixteen.
I've been forgotten. It's hard to be anxious.
I put one to my miss, second by Mr. Grant. Uh, adopted in nineteen fourteen, twenty sixteen. Mr. Churchman, please call it in. Get Aaron out of this. We're gonna pay for this.
Greg.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yeah.
Tanner.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Resolution fourteen, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Now, this time. Miss Coniston, and if the basketball team will come forward. And Miss Coniston will go down, why don't you go down there and watch? You know, you know the guy.
Come on, man. My reason is I should play it on the gas. You know? I, I think it's all.
Yeah, yeah. I play it on, I have sugar in my mouth.
All right, I promise to be loud. Because I'm gonna reply. You know, I do play it and I have sugar in my mouth. This is a Resolution honoring the Whitehall Yearling High School Boys Basketball Team for their outstanding twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen season. We're, we're asked that it is a desire of this council to recognize and honor the Whitehall Yearling High School Boys Basketball Team for making it into the district finals and believing in their motto, and I bet, "One goal, one dream, one team." And we're asked the Whitehall Yearling High School Boys Basketball Team are the mid-state league champions for the third year in a row, first three repeats since nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three, and nineteen eighty-four. And we're asked Coach Drew Williams is the Ohio Division Coach of the Year for three years in a row. And we're as players CJ Prater and Antoine Vaughn receive first team honors in the mid-state league. And we're as players Ethan Weiss, can I say that right? Dice. And Earl Redmond received second team honors in the mid-state league. And we're as player Malik.
Malik.
Malik. Good night, thank you. Please go to need some help. Received honorable mention in the mid-state league. And we're as the accomplishments of the boys' basketball team have been a source of inspiration and pride to all the citizens of Whitehall. And we're as such efforts should be recognized and encouraged and celebrated. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, that the council of the city of Whitehall on behalf of all their citizens wishes to express a sincere congratulations to the boys' basketball team and coaches for their individual and collective efforts and wish them continued success, health, and happiness. That this council hereby declares April fifth to be Whitehall Yearling High School Boys Basketball Team Day in recognition of their accomplishments listed herein before. That this resolution shall go into effect in the earliest period allowed by law past this fifth day of April, twenty fifteen. If not, we'll make sure we get more. Everyone's guys, that a little closer effect for one pick-up is here.
Good changes, guys, you've had a lot of time watching. Now who's gonna be the spokesperson? Somebody has to say a few words. All right, man, I think you.
Just wanna say, uh, thank you for everybody, uh, coming to our game and supporting us. Everybody sticking to my family, bettering the community.
Is there anybody else?
That's what I'm.
Just wanted to reiterate what, uh, Antoine said in very short form. Uh, but, uh, really appreciate, uh, the community and what you've done. Um, you know, three years ago when I first started, didn't know what to expect. Uh, the first home game, it was kind of a sparse crowd. Uh, but then we look at the games like Cincinnati-Mole or some of the playoff games we've had. I've seen people from all ages, little kids, all the way up to senior citizens, uh, Vietnam vets, uh, military vets, everybody coming out to these games. Means a lot to these kids. And, uh, uh, we're not a finished product yet, uh, we're continuing to work and trying to get better. Uh, but just to give you a little bit of an idea about what's going on with some of these kids. Uh, Antoine Vaughn has a couple scholarship offers on the table. Uh, he's got some work to do in the classroom, get some things done, he's got some offers on the table. He will be attending college next year. Malik Nelson offered a basketball scholarship out of Vaughn, uh, college, he will be attending out of Vaughn next year. Also had offers from Wilmington College. Um, Earl Redmond was, uh, accepted to, uh, University of Toledo, Shawnee State, uh, uh, Montgomery College outside of DC. Uh, he wants to play basketball, so he's trying to sift through which one might give him a chance to, uh, be a five-minute center. Working with CJ Baker, trying to get things forwarded with him, Tyler, uh, Whitley also. But, uh, I think the end result, what you'll see is that, uh, um, pretty much all of our players will say this year, uh, will be in college next year in some shape or form with academic gifts and athletics or comprehensive work. So I think that, uh, from our standpoint here, we would thank you. Uh, these kids are trying to do you proud, and I think you also do us proud and give us support. Got your hat, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I apologize for, I, we got our signals crossed last week, and I know that you came last week, and I appreciate that. So for me to yield so much as God.
Thank you, guys, I enjoyed it.
Where's ours?
We got every team now, if you're ever gonna.
Every fifty said every.
Everybody wants dough now.
Hey, just put me in charge of you now, I don't have this. All right, back to a little more serious business. We have the approval of minutes for the March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to propose to approve the March fifteenth minutes.
Set that. Uh, motion by Miss Coniston, a second by Mr. Tanner for approval of the March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen minutes. Mr. Churchman, please call it in.
Greg.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yeah.
Tanner.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, the minutes stand approved. It's our first opportunity for poll public, if anyone would like to come forward, you have up to three minutes. Uh, state your name and address for the record. Yeah. Those gotta come up, you know?
Good evening, council, administration, and our voters. My name is Steve Condon, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm here to speak on.
Address.
Of, uh, ordinance thirty.
Address.
Daytime address, Florida two North Hamilton Road, evening address, twenty six eighteen, nine thirty. Uh, I'm here to speak on in, uh, in support of ordinance thirty-six and thirty-seven. And a park director might be the last person you would think of speaking to behalf of someone on a park. And, um, I had, uh, a pretty strict criteria, uh, as far as supporting this project. And I, I think that this project meets all that criteria. First of all, project must be good for the community. Um, this project will accelerate our economic development. Success leads to success. A complement enhances the plan we're planning to revenue improvement by also more than gate line. It benefits our school, uh, additional revenue with no additional students. Our land has a proven track record of being a great community and corporate partner. Their beautifully landscaped property and broken glass building will help create a new front door for community park. And the projected, uh, revenue from this project will generate two point one million dollars to the park. So again, um, this has the support of Parks and Recreation Commission and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward?
Oh, go ahead, now.
No, sir.
Good evening.
State your name and address for the record.
Jacqueline Thompson, two eight seven, and go with that, we want. Um, I have a copy of your current plans for the commercialization of Whitehall Community Park. Uh, right up next to the upper level lot will be a two-story commercial building and two additional parking lots. Uh, Development Director Zach Woodruff told me that one of these lots would be for visitors to the park. Um, why is that, since there's a huge, uh, public parking lot to the south of the track, being this whole lot? Does this mean the city has plans to sell off that land also? Uh, it was in the plans in two thousand and eight. And I would mention that in two thousand and eight, they were talking, the city leaders, about selling off the whole top half of, uh, Whitehall Community Park. And, uh, so we don't know exactly how much you're going to end up selling off. We know you're going to do some more down about below, um, the top of the park also. Uh, parking lots and two, a two-story commercial building will be our view on the top portion of the park. You're going to build a third parking lot at the bottom of the hill and planning to sell off an additional thirteen acres, I believe it is, of the people's land down below. Now, there will be one hundred employees in the bank building. Instead of tearing down those office sheds and creating a natural buffer against, um, Hamilton Road traffic, you plan to grow additional noise and traffic to the park. Just what do you think the congested traffic will be like from one hundred employees coming and going up against our park? Not to mention the pollution it will bring. This is reason enough to vote this down. The development on Broad and Main Streets and Hamilton Road has created enough problems for our neighborhoods. Does the city have to grow the only natural green space we have in this town? Woodruff told me that, even though he couldn't name any, other cities have commercial buildings up against their parks. I'm not familiar with any, and he couldn't name any. Besides, it is one thing if a developer comes in on private property contiguous with the park, meets zoning codes, and builds an office building on it. It's another thing for a city to sell off its park to big business instead of protecting the people's assets for the people who live here. It's nothing sacred in this town. Now, please don't insult us and use the usual scare tactic claiming that there is a need to sell our, our park and turn one more of our city into commercial districts because someday a DSCC might move away. Um, I've been hearing that excuse since I moved here in nineteen eighty. Just think what might have been accomplished in the past thirty-six years if we have had visionary leaders instead of indifferent officials. If our city leaders had made our neighborhoods and our citizens their priority instead of caring only for self-advisance and giving away our treasure to business. Lastly, a coming calling sureer in the benefits of parks, why America needs more city parks and open space, published by the Trust for Public Wings, and I'll quote, "In the view of park visionaries, parks were not amenities. They were necessit, necessities, providing recreation, inspiration, and essential respite from the city's player and vessel. And the visionaries were particularly concerned that parks be available to all of the city's residents, especially those who did not have the resources to escape to the countryside."
Yeah, about thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. Uh, city parks also produce important social and community develop, development, um, benefits. They offer recreational opportunities for at-risk, young, low-income children and low-income families. And they provide places in low-income neighborhoods where people can feel a sense of community. Access to public parks and recreational facilities has been strongly linked to reductions in crime and in particular to reduce the amount of delinquency. We are certainly a community in need of this. We have failed this portion of our population by segregating them and clinging to a false belief that what happens in our four areas of town has nothing to do with us and has no impact on our lives. I urge you to vote no on any legislation to sell or lease all or any of Whitehall Community Parks. Thank you.
All right, who else, uh, would like to come forward at this time? State your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes.
Um, Kate Wilson, five oh four seven, to Ralph Hammond. Um, I've lived in Whitehall, uh, one oh sixty-two years, and I've served as one of the Parks and Recreation Commissioners since January two thousand and fifteen. I'd first like to speak in favor of ordinance number over six, two thousand and sixteen, and over seven, two, two thousand and sixteen. I wholeheartedly support the sale of a portion of Whitehall Community Park presently. Used to be our first apartment maintenance area. We are fortunate to have the authority to relocate our parks maintenance, a property that will better serve the needs of our parks in parks maintenance staff. The addition of park advantage to Whitehall has countless benefits, but most importantly to our parks is the income stream its taxes will provide. Our Parks and Recreation Commission developed a master plan that has many proposed improvements to each of our park properties in Whitehall. Trying to prioritize those projects we are looking to have funding is very difficult. The creation of a parks improvement in Mount LeFond gives us renewed energy. We can upgrade our parks and recreational facilities to ones that we deserve and can be proud of. I would also like to touch on the splash pad due to the negative social media this past week. The overism splash pad would have fallen if no one, it's situational. The splash pad will be built, not just not in a time frame we go for. Throughout the development of the master plan and continuing to do two community forums we hold in January, we have sought and welcomed input from citizens. Although the petition, participation was small, we are grateful for the folks who attended this. I was a boy scout leader for twenty years, and no one appreciates park maintenance more than I do. But parks without facilities, maintenance, and program are just beta plots. Those three things are necessary for the lifeblood of a successful person or creation program. And like everything else, lifeblood doesn't come free. This is an exciting time for Whitehall. I encourage you to make a difference for the vital citizens of today and tomorrow. Thank you.
Who else would like to, uh, forward, state your name and address for the record, you have up to three minutes.
Four, four, eight, three, seven, and then, yes, passive ordinances. You know, white more to less, wrong quote, when I was unfortunately, it gave this for a dollar. Gave us that part, okay? With that stipulation, no selling off or anything for a six-week, seven-year period. Okay? I saw that as, okay, that's great. More park, I'm gonna put a straight on all rest of parks, gotta be, gotta maintain that part. Instead of voting away all the other parts. But I really didn't like that part, okay? Cause I'd like one over there. It's, you know, out of luck, can't walk there. I walked out there with a park. It's, that's like a metro thing. What they're trying to do now is beautiful. It's gotta be more metro feel, I'll probably go there, you know? And, uh, selling off a little bit to gain the lot. But that one part, uh, our commissioner was mistaken that what they both told me was where that was a plan purchased by, uh, prior administration and put in the place. That was not part plan. So it's game part plan by doing that. Which, you know, personally, I'd like to measure, you know, for, you know, music activity over there, and that's when my technique is probably something to record, you know, a lot of it there. But that's just, you know, hindsight, you might as well do that, you can do that, but anyway, uh, that, uh, is a good deal. I mean, I saw the plans, I looked at it, and I'm skeptical, but, you know, I'm an old school guy, I hate change. But without change, we're with or without. We have to change, and we can grow and prosper. Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward at this time? All right, well, we'll give everyone a chance, and everyone. All right, so we'll move on. Uh, to our standing committee reports, we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet two weeks ago. We have our members on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
All right, thank you. Community engagement, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Grant. Community engagement met two weeks ago in our Minister on File, and we'll meet again next week in the back sometime after six thirty.
Yes. You opened up. Yeah. Community standards and enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also met last Tuesday in our two twenty-two, our Minister on File. Uh, we discussed, uh, the two quarter, uh, ordinances, and those being tabled until the, uh, four, until nineteen, until the day was being. We also, uh, added the ordinance thirty-four, twenty sixteen, or thirty-nine seventy, sponsor. Minister on File, we'll meet next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, economic development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic development also, we met two weeks ago, and our heads are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday, I suspect.
All right, thank you. Infrastructure maintenance and service, Chairperson Grant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Architecture maintenance service also met last week. Um, we discussed the ordinance thirty-one and, uh, Resolution twenty-two, which will be up tonight. Um, and we'll meet sometime in the back next week.
All right, thank you, sir. Public safety, Chairperson Stabler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety met two weeks ago as, uh, that's about two, two and nineteen, which will be right today as well. Ten minutes on file, we'll meet again next Tuesday.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Rec also met two weeks ago, our Minister on File, discussed, uh, Whitehall Community Park, we also discussed some of our little leagues, uh, the splash pad and the armor. We discussed Whitehall Community Park. We also discussed some of our little leagues, Splash Pad, and the Armory. And next week in the back after six thirty.
All right, those are all our standing committee reports. We'll begin with our officials' reports with our Mayor, Ms. Ken Mager.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everybody that eight o'clock on Saturday is a shred day for Whitehall residents. And we leave early twelve to two here at Cedar Hall. So if you've got some documents that you'd like to get shredded, bring them over. Also, I just want to say it's, we have a great, have a great basketball team this year. Congrats to Whitehall High School, those basketball. It's a terrific program. And I just would like also say that my oldest star's birthday is tomorrow. And I didn't see any donuts.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from our City Attorney, Mr. Michael Vittles.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I, from the City Attorney's Office, I would like to report that in the month of March, we had approximately two hundred and fifty-five cases go through Mayor's Court as well as town in Franklin County. Out of that, two hundred and fifty-five cases, only eighty-four were actual Whitehall residents. So we're tracking, and it seems to be that we're consistent. Somewhere around twenty-seven percent to thirty-two percent of the cases that were prosecuted in the city are Whitehall residents, which is not a, not a bad percentage that we're tracking. I would almost say that, venture to say that that's probably going to be a consistent number throughout the year. But I would continue to keep up those numbers each month. We are, we have set a mandate in the City Attorney's Office in the past three months that cases that are set for trial will go to trial. So our prosecutors are going to trial and they've actually had four cases go to jury trial. Incidentally, when defense attorneys see that we're ready for trial, they want to get the case settled. So unfortunately, our attorneys haven't been able, we did go get one, two quad, quad year, but they settled the case during quad year. So that means during jury selection, I'm sorry, tease a lawyer term. But, but those cases are intended to send a message throughout Franklin County that the Whitehall City Attorney's Office is not only ready to go to trial, but we're, we're going to trial. Incidentally, in preparation for that, the mock court program is full steam ahead. And we're, we're currently doing that. Lastly, just because I was listening to the polling public and I would also like counsel and ask for favorable consideration of Ordinance thirty-six and thirty-seven. As I think about this and I've had these private conversations with my wife, as well as Zach Woodruff to my right, the thing that, that overwhelms my heart as it relates to the ordinance is the fact that we have a mayor with a vision and with a heart to see something that will outlive her term as mayor. I mean, notwithstanding many changes to the charter, we all know that this is her last term as mayor. And the fact that she has the, the heart and the vision to put, put her, put forward to, to ask for this type of development is admirable. As a citizen of Whitehall and thinking about what this can do, not only for the, the parks, but also for the schools, it is very admirable, especially with respect to the park endowed fund. Notwithstanding the city of Columbus or Gehanna selling off portions of its business and portion of its land, Whitehall is landlocked. So the fact that we have a mayor that is, that has the vision and has the, the heart to think outside of the box, I think takes a lot of guts. And so at least if she's willing to stand up and, and put her neck out to ask the citizens to do something that we haven't done in a long time, which is sell off our land, I want, as the City Attorney, to let you know that as I've reviewed the plan, as I've heard the, the talks, as I've spoken to the residents, it is a good plan and it's a plan that will benefit our city in the long run. Now, I'm saying that with this in mind. We have litigation that you've seen. It's been public. It's been in the paper. You've all received certified copies of it. And you've public, you've seen that, seen copies of that litigation. It is important to remind everyone in this room that Golf Dome is a, is a private for-profit business. They are a tenant of the city of Whitehall. They are not a, a public servant of this city. Their vested interest is to make money. And to the extent that they have, and they're trying to exercise an unfettered right to stay in that land when they have no, no right to be there, rest assured, the City Attorney's Office of Whitehall will litigate that case aggressively to remove them from that property so that we can use that land for its intended purpose, which is to benefit the citizens of Whitehall. And that's the official report from the City Attorney's Office.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from our Director of the. Next, we'll hear from our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Dan Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things to note. I would ask for favorable consideration for Ordinance thirty-one two thousand and sixteen and Resolution twenty-two two thousand and sixteen. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two two thousand and sixteen would allow the mayor to enter into agreement with ABM, Rob Wood, and fifteen are here again this evening. So that we can move forward with upgrading the dampers during the heating, cooling, and lighting in amongst the city buildings that we believe not only will have an impact, positive impact on our employees' work environment, but also save the, save the taxpayers dollars. I also wanted to let counsel know that earlier this week, we did award a contract for the North Hamilton Road project that will kick off later this month. And that is a hundred and eighty-day project that will include resurfacing the railroad tracks, putting in new lighting and a new walking trail to the point this mentioned was made about how to go to walk there. Part of this two-point-seven million dollar project is to actually put in a path that will connect folks from Hamilton and Pop all the way down into the park, making it better and easier for people of all ages to be able to walk over to Whitehall Community Park. And Paul, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that we are getting much closer to having an official contract with Franklin County to be able to do the curb and gutters on San Jose this year. So we're getting much closer on that. I don't think of all six years past gave us the chance to get into the curb and gutters. But the county is going to pay for about seventy percent of that. And so that project, we have notified the low bidder. We have to work with the county to get a contract with them first. And then we can officially have the contract start with the curb and gutters on San Jose will be done this year. So, Mr. President, that is all the official report I have.
Next, we'll hear from our City Auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the, you come back, there's a deadline which was quickly upon it. The, the office will be open Saturday the ninth and Saturday the sixteenth from eight to ten. And then on, you know, April tax day is, is the eighteenth because of the federal holiday, Massacation Day. And it will be open that day from seven o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night. Those are the matters. I'd ask for favorable consideration of Ordinance thirty-one, thirty-two, Resolution thirty-nine, twenty-six.
Next, we have our Director, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I'm sure most of you are probably aware that Key Bank Branch on South Hamilton Road has decided to close up on the twenty-ninth of this month. Will be their last day of operation in Whitehall. Beyond that point, I'm going to have to be taking the city's deposits intrinsically to develop our business. So while Key Bank is pulling out of Whitehall for whatever reasons that they have, and they have not been the easiest financial institution in the world, I will tell you. But there are plenty of other institutions that do want to conduct business in Whitehall. So we will be preparing a request for bid. Unfortunately, those kinds of things take time. We won't be able to have anything in place, you know, obviously before the end of the month. But I just wanted to let you know that none of this has been lost on me. We are seriously looking at how to put together a process for this and get some of the things that we want out of this deal. Key Bank has been pretty, pretty hardline with us on a number of things. And there's, there are, there should be a better way to handle it.
All right, thank you. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office. We have the Auditor's Expense Report for February two thousand and sixteen, the Auditor's Bank Report for February two thousand and sixteen, the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position for February two thousand and sixteen, the Auditor's Revenue Report for February two thousand and sixteen, the Mayor's Report to Council for February two thousand and sixteen, and the Division of Fire Overtime Report for February two thousand and sixteen. Next, we, we have the three items listed on our agenda this evening under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, and we have received no additional items since the agenda was published. We have two public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first is for Ordinance twenty-five twenty sixteen. That public hearing has been postponed till April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen. The second one is for Ordinance twenty-six twenty sixteen. That has also been postponed to the April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen meeting. Ms. Churchman, please call a roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. All right, we'll start off this evening with our third reading ordinance. This is actually the one we did. And the first one up is Ordinance twenty-three twenty sixteen. It's authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with the Commons of Royal Landing LLC involving the purchase of real property.
Mr. President, wish to move, wish to introduce and move with the adoption of Ordinance twenty-three twenty sixteen.
Second. A motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Tanner for the introduction and adoption of Ordinance twenty-three twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-three twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-five twenty sixteen. It's amending that a zoning map attached to Chapter one one two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under GCD zoning class to permit the Kroger Company to operate a pharmacy drive-through on land located at thirty-six sixty-two East Broad Street, property owned by TCCI Broad LLC and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance twenty-five twenty sixteen and move to have tabled to April nineteenth twenty sixteen. Second, a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Gray for, to have Ordinance twenty-five twenty sixteen tabled to the April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen meeting. Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-five twenty sixteen has been tabled to the April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen meeting. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-six twenty sixteen. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter one one two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under Section one one two-three point one zero C six to permit the Kroger Company to operate a fueling station on land located at thirty-six sixty-two East Broad Street, property owned by TCCI Broad LLC and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance twenty-six twenty sixteen and move to have, have tabled to April nineteenth twenty sixteen. Second, the motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Gray for the tabling of Ordinance twenty-six twenty sixteen to the April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen meeting. Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-six twenty sixteen has been tabled to the April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen meeting. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-seven twenty sixteen. It's to authorize the provision of certain tax exemptions within the East Broad Street District Community Reinvestment Area for the purpose of encouraging economic development within the area and authorizing the execution of the related community reinvestment area agreement and authorizing execution of a tax increment financing agreement.
Mr. President, wish to introduce and move to table Ordinance twenty-seven twenty sixteen.
Second. A motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Gray for the tabling of Ordinance twenty-seven twenty sixteen to the April nineteenth meeting of twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-seven twenty sixteen has been tabled to the April nineteenth two thousand and sixteen meeting. Those are all the items we have under second reading. Under second reading, we have Resolution thirteen twenty sixteen. It's approving adoption of the Indigent Indigent burial policy and application for the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. I threw the Ohio in there. It's really not in there. There might be Whitehall, New York. I don't know. I think Ohio should be in there. Anyway, that resolution is being read by Tyler Olman. Next, we have Resolution fifteen twenty sixteen. It's resolve, it's a resolution honoring the Whitehall Yearling High School Lady Rams bowling team for their outstanding two, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen season. That resolution is being read by Tyler Olman. Those are all the items we have under second reading. On the first reading, we have Ordinance thirty-one twenty sixteen, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of one million six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars from the Hamilton Road Improvement Issue Two Account to the North Hamilton Road OPWC Issue Two Fund, making an appropriation of one million six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars from the North Hamilton Road OPWC Issue Two Fund to the North Hamilton Road OPWC Issue Two Account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance thirty-one two thousand and sixteen and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gray, a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance thirty-one twenty sixteen, and I would concur and more. Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance thirty-one twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gray, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance thirty-one twenty sixteen. Questions, questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-one twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen. It's approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars from the personal lead buyback account to the bank fees account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd introduce Ordinance thirty-two two thousand and sixteen and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance thirty-two twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance thirty-two twenty sixteen. Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance thirty-two twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call a roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-two twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen, approving a supplemental appropriation. Yeah, I know. Two hundred and fifty. of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the legal expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-three two thousand and sixteen and move to amend it to read as to the copies we were provided tonight.
So that dollar amount then would be one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
We're there.
Okay.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner to amend ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen, changing the dollar amount from two hundred and fifty thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and to read as supplied to council this evening. The ordinance. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen has been adopted.
Mr. President.
I mean, I'm sorry, it's been amended.
Stand.
Mr. President. Yeah, I got you, I got you, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-three two thousand and sixteen, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen.
I move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-three twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance thirty-four twenty sixteen. Amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three point one-zero C twenty-nine to allow Buckeye Express Wash LLC to operate a car wash facility on property located at thirty-eight ninety-seven East Broad Street, property owned by Saggy Realty LLC. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. It's also, we'll refer that to the planning commission, and set a public hearing for this ordinance for May third two thousand and sixteen. Next is ordinance thirty-five twenty sixteen. It's authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a purchase and sale agreement and other appropriate documents on behalf of the city to sell parcels zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-six-two-three, to Hamilton Crossing Homes LLC to conduct a secret housing facility known as Hamilton Crossing. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is ordinance thirty-six twenty sixteen. It's authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a purchase and sale agreement and other appropriate documents on behalf of the city to sell approximately six acres of property in the Whitehall Community Park to the Heartland Bank for its new headquarters facility. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next is ordinance thirty-seven twenty sixteen. It's approving the creation of fund park improvements endowed with funds. That ordinance is being read by Title Holman. Next, we have ordinance thirty-eight twenty sixteen. It's making and approving a supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the property, property acquisition and maintenance account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-two thousand and sixteen for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance thirty-eight twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance thirty-eight twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of ordinance thirty-eight twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-eight twenty sixteen has been adopted. That is the last ordinance we have under first reading. We have several resolutions. The first one is resolution nineteen twenty sixteen. It's authorizing the mayor to place Aaron Holman, City of Whitehall Police Dispatcher, at a step seat in compliance with section seventeen point two of the current labor agreement by and between the City of Whitehall and the Southern Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution number nineteen two thousand and sixteen, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Staley, and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution nineteen twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance nineteen twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Staley, and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of resolution nineteen twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Resolution nineteen twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty sixteen. It's honoring the Whitehall Yearling High School Wrestling Team, state champions, honor. Where is it?
Abdul Julian.
Why would you do that?
Yeah.
I would've, I was, I would've done this, we, that's why I said.
This is our fun.
Anyway, that's who it is.
Rearrange it.
I would've get this, I forgot to write it down.
I'd probably get him in here.
Yes, I have to write it out the way it sounds to me, so. Anyway, that resolution is being read by Title Holman. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty sixteen. Honoring the Whitehall Yearling High School Wrestling Team for their outstanding two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. Our next resolution is twenty-two twenty sixteen. It's authorizing the selection of ABM Building Solutions for the implementation of a guaranteed energy savings project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-two two thousand and sixteen, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gray, and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty-two twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on resolution twenty-two twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gray, and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of resolution twenty-two twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Resolution twenty-two twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next is resolution twenty-three twenty sixteen. Honoring the Whitehall Yearling High School Lady Rams Bowling Team, state champions, state champion Madison Spithmore. That resolution is being read by Title Holman. All right, next we have resolution twenty-four twenty sixteen. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-four two thousand and sixteen, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Staley for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty-four twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Resolution twenty-four twenty, the rules have been suspended on resolution twenty-four twenty sixteen. Right now, adopted?
No.
Suspended, suspended, that's what I thought. Well, see, you got somebody here laughing at you when you say what's real, and you think you're wrong.
We're all new. You don't have that confidence.
Oh, how about that? Are you afraid? Anyway, Mr. President, move to adopt. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Staley for adoption of resolution twenty-four twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. All right, resolution twenty-four twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have resolution twenty-five twenty sixteen. It's a resolution to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-five two thousand and sixteen, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty-five twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on resolution twenty-five twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of resolution twenty-five twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Resolution twenty-three twenty-five twenty sixteen has been adopted. That is twenty-five twenty sixteen. Is that my heat cable? Right, I know. All right, next we have resolution twenty-six twenty sixteen. Resolution twenty-six twenty sixteen, to resolve and to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-six two thousand and sixteen, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty-six twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on resolution twenty-six twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of resolution twenty-six twenty sixteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Resolution twenty-six twenty sixteen has been adopted. Those are all the items of legislation we have on the agenda this evening. We will move on to our second opportunity for full public. Taylor would like to address counsel. You may come forward and address counsel, however, you may not cover the same subject that you've already covered.
I think they have that assigned to your room.
No.
No, I did come up with something else, because I was reading your vision statement here, and it ends as, um, through visionary leadership, citizen involvement, community partnerships, physical responsibility, or reserve, strong neighborhoods, natural beauty, and our small town character. Now, I live on Maplewood, as you know, and I'd like to know how you work preserving my neighborhood. There have been in the last month, five rents lined up in front of single-family houses, and one of them was one of our nice two stories right across the street, Catagor, for me, as turned rental now. The traffic from commercialization we have already up and down Maplewood is just ruining our neighborhood. And now you're going to put a super trucker store down at the end of Maplewood. Maplewood, Hollywood, and Robinwood, those should be stable Maplewoods. Instead, they're turning more and more into rental properties, traffic, and I'm talking vehicular and, um, and your stranger traffic going up and down our streets, where sometimes I don't even feel safe going out in my yard in the front. And there are times where I have that in my yard and going in and out of home. So this is what you're creating in our neighborhood, you're ruining Maplewood, Hollywood, and Robinwood. And now, because that silly law that allows chickens, unlimited chickens, and it doesn't care, if you don't care, what kind of shack or shed hits sand, it can be seen from the street, what does that do to our property values? And who wants the high house next to them? What chance do we have for selling our investments, when you keep doing many very bad decisions for our neighborhood? And lastly, I'd like to say, Mr. Evans, why do you think it is that seventy-five percent of the criminals and the cases that you have that go to court, that they're strangers? It's because we attract them into the city by the type of commercialization we have brought into the city and higher management properties. And lastly, um, when you say that you're preserving our strong neighborhoods and natural beauty, and I will say real quickly before you stop me, you're settling off the one natural beautiful place that we have in the city, piece by piece. Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward this time? All right. Same number one, we will move through to the day four.
Do you think hopefully we have a very, very busy next few weeks, um, at the mayor's side. We have our first of two shreddings. Um, you really listen to everything that, um, that was something I wanted more of and wanted more of, so, um, we will have a shredding out in this parking lot, the south parking lot. And actually from eleven to one, we ended up changing the time. So, sorry, um, so, that's the company, I can just a little bit. So it will be out here, so bring, bring any papers you need to get rid of, you know, these did your hat then, you know, you ever have the, your clothes, you know? It's supposed to be easily stuffed here.
There is layers.
So, um, you know, if you want to make sure that you're properly disposing of that, that will be shredded on site securely.
What do you think?
That this Saturday.
Does it have to be in a box?
It does not. No, you can bring a bag and we'll just dump it in. Um, it dumps into this big, like, orange pan-like container and the truck actually lifts it up and shreds it on site.
A paper bag?
Well, yeah, or a plastic bag. If you want to dump it out, we'll dump it into it and then we'll recycle the, because of plastic bags and all. So that, that was this coming Saturday. Next Saturday, from ten to two, at Rosemore is our health expo, which is an internship for, um, public health. We're really excited about this. Um, we have so many screenings. Um, I think there will be some real value for those who are kind. We'll have neighborhoods. Um, we'll dream register at the end of the, there still are some spots, um, remember, called One West Side, as well as like two courses in the hallway. Um, we will have blood pressure, glucose, um, vision, hearing, all kinds of stuff, so, um, and, and also, so I think it will be a, a really good value for our community. We're attending to Rosemore on Friday to sixteen. On Tuesday the nineteenth, right here, um, right before your next council meeting, we will have a collect information session about this year's home reinvestment program. So you can talk about the application or more about the process or more about what we need to do. And, um, so again, we meet like at six P M. Right here, Tuesday the nineteenth, before your council meeting.
Excuse me, do you have a home reinvestment program? How many years have you done this?
This is the third year of the program, yeah.
And it has affected how many years?
Um, about, almost fifty exactly.
Each year?
Yeah.
So, I have another question. Is this something that would preserve strong neighborhoods or encourage people to, um,
Yeah, I mean, this year will, um, make for hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, this is more private.
A third of a million in the last couple of years. Is that for a third of a million in the last couple of years?
Correct.
Back in our neighborhood.
Yeah. And actually, back on that, um, the next event, May seventh, is rebuilding together people Ohio's, rebuilding healthy urban projects. As you guys know, I passed around a sign sheet. We are looking to build our teen white hole. We, um, have permitted to bring in, um, some volunteer-led community laughter and have people come out. So, um, there's a sign up for, in our teen white hole on, uh, May seventh, honorosa, but if you are interested, anyone in the audience interested in bringing up the help out with that, um, I have a paper sign up for you because we're facing the after work.
Yeah, nothing to rush you again, but this is the program that replaced that.
It's basically starting over like last year, yes.
And I think it affected-
Twenty-five homes last year, um, and a hundred and twenty-two dollars investment as well as about seven hundred volunteers, certainly to help that neighborhood. Um, if you're associated or of, um, your education or anything.
So, I'm clear in hearing that it's happening again this year.
It is. I'm here definitely here in Morrisfield, so we'll be helping twenty-five residents in the Morrisfield area and as well as the county area in general. Um, so we have teams in the, as well as just to read in this general, um, community participation effort on this. Uh, it'll really be a six-time thing, but we're asking people to, to, they're coming.
I think that would affect property, uh, add a thirty-eight percent increase to the same number last year.
I would call it like that.
Call it like that.
Or previous. Um, and then, we've got, um, May fourteenth is our community cleanup, which is like, I like doing these deals, but, um, since we are now a part of American people, as part of all people, we'll be participating in the national green areas cleanup, so our, um, our cleanup, that's part of the green areas cleanup, that's crews and, and communities and foundation are, are, so more of a, um, uh, that's it.
I hear you're loving straight.
How many?
What's that?
I thought it would be planned for next year already.
Sorry, I only wish, not even a whole day, I could've gone.
However.
I've got some next for you.
Last, last week I saw him by my car and I was kissing him, that, what are you doing? Egg in my car? And he did egg in my car. He had a bag of plastic eggs, so I just, they had all my car. I thought that was a very clever deal.
Who loves that subject for, um, there gonna be egg?
Oh, I do. Um, Monday, this coming Monday, at six-thirty over at the VFW is, um, the next W C C A meeting. We would love to have you come. We are getting ready to finalize all of the plans for this summer. Um, I can tell you in advance that we are going to be having a pageant, it's all on the twenty-fifth, which is a Saturday. Um, we're going to start at half in the morning with the babies and then we're going to end at six-thirty with the white hole pageant, which is this year going to be a scholarship pageant. And, um, the next day, June twenty-sixth, which is Sunday, um, over at the VFW, we'll be having our crew in. And more details to follow with that. And then exciting news, and you're the first to hear this, um, the community picnic is going to be changed and it will be on July second this year. So more people will be able to be involved and participate and have a good time.
Hey, Karen, I showed up for the W C C A meeting last night, uh-
Did you have a good meeting?
Yeah, I'm, uh, if you would've heard me, I'm gonna next week.
I just better find stock and pay for it.
Who else has something?
I do. On April the twenty-third, I guess we'll get out, but we have our annual Pat McMillan Relay to the high school. Big turnout. I've got a lot of volunteers and I'm not going to be here, but I'm going to go ahead and say now, on maybe tenth, we have the M S L League Championships in tract of high school. And there are, here this year, this is a big thing, so that's what's important.
Who knows what teaching capacity Pat McMillan had at the high? He was the R P. For a high school.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Pretty.
That's a shock. Well, that's no fair. You worked there.
No.
He was a student at school there.
Ah, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to go to the janitor's, just for my spaghetti dinner is on the seventeenth. Um, at the senior theater from noon until five.
Four.
Noon until four.
Eight dollars a dinner.
And it's delicious.
Delicious.
It does, for adults, five dollars, the kids free.
Four kids, four dollars for kids, three hundred for you. Bob Bailey and Dan Mall order a coke, so. I'm a little crazy in championship.
We didn't done that for that. Why? And who else has something for community data? All right, we'll move on to poll counsel.
Well, thank you everyone for coming. Um, uh, I know the basketball team left, but I wanted to come personally, I probably could've been there, but, um, you know, really proud of, uh, our coach and, uh, he's doing a great job, puts a friend on that, uh, for years at Brookdale High School. Um, and, uh, the players have really taken hold of it and, uh, it's kind of even civic. There's a lot of character building going on. Uh, and, um, you know, he and I talk every once in a while and he, you know, he knew he had his work cut out for him, but he's done a great job. And it doesn't say on the resolution, but this guy was voted the state coach of the year, not this year, but two years prior to that, which is kind of unheard of in the state of Ohio, you know? So just wanted, you know, I wish, you know, of course I told him that before, but, um, I wish he could've been here to, yeah, but, but have a good night.
Mr. Coniston.
Thank you everybody for coming. Um, the one thing, and I was talking to superintendent out there, Frank, the one thing that, that I want to say about our kids from the high school is they are so polite and respectful and, you know, I, I want to think it's not just because I'm old, but when I go over there, they just will hold the door for you and will, yes ma'am, you know, what can I help you with? And, um, during the Easter egg, when we were doing the stuffing of that, they all came over and said, can we help out? Do you need me to carry something, throw something out? So I just think that we have the most fantastic kids at our schools and, um, that, that was just proof of them here tonight.
Register Mr. Tanner.
Hmm, thank you, Mr. President. Or so, thanks for coming, superintendent. Let's say, so, thank you so much for coming. Um, you know what Vance said, you know, I, I, I don't play so many games and we got a true leader in this gentleman. I mean, he takes in, in all of these kids and it's amazing, um, Mr. Evans and I were talking about one of the players that he's talking to tonight, Earl. We've discussed him a couple of times and it's good to see that these kids are actually going to college, you know, they've got a passion, they're working on it. Um, and it's a really good thing. Um, you know, I had the luxury to last year to, to do my kid's stuff. I'm not going to be here, this will be my last public appearance for council for, well, I, I'm shooting for Jim. I'm going to have surgery next week. I wanted to shoot for the district for the, uh, league championship, watch my son, but now I'm set for realistic goal, maybe the middle of June, watch, walk my daughter down the aisle, so, um, I'll be back here for next week. So, you know, we got a lot of new things going on. Um, the administration, they work really hard and I thank you so much. I appreciate you, you know, that you sent in. And I've talked to Mr. Gray and members of council and people like you. We're making change. Um, my brother lives on Maplewood also. He, he sees some of the things that we do, you know, just with circus and streets and things like that. And we're actually relieving the congestion when a truck or loose across the street. Um, and I do support that. I think it's a really good thing. As far as the parks, I've always been a good seller of parks now. There was four, I was back during council one night, a few years ago, right about six years ago. And we're totally against it. And the young lady made a statement that people wanted to sell the park, well, we didn't. However, you know, we've got an opportunity here and I thank Mr. Carr and the people who's for coming. And I'm actually being at the parks and running, and I see what y'all do, um, and I see the administration come. I do support thirty-six and thirty-seven. I think it's a really big step for us, so. So with that said, I thank you everybody.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by thanking everybody for coming tonight. That's well appreciated and, uh, once we do a coming for me, uh, hope that it's a really, really, our parents support through your city and get it better. I also want to thank our, our school board members and our superintendent. Our schools are not only educating our young people, but they're creating champions and future city leaders. And I think you guys do a fantastic job. Same with me. I also want to thank Zach, Zach Wood. Mayor Ken Mager, I mean, you're bringing businesses into the city that people have never thought of. I spoke with a gentleman today, gave him a taxi ready for Mr. Miller. And he said, he works in the, and he said, you know, that was, it was a tough call for Whitehall, to go after Hart and Bank. Hart and Bank to come here is just a huge opportunity, huge opportunity. So thank you, Matt, for bringing that to the city and showing the rest of the community and to love us, what Whitehall's made of. Thank you, Matt. Go Rams.
All right, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also would like to thank everyone for coming. School representatives, park representatives, and everyone's support for this, uh, new adventure, which the city is taking. Administration, for the fine job. Mike Council for all of your support.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, I thank all of you for attending tonight and thanks for all of your comments. I mean, there's not much left to say, especially after the things you shared, Mike. I appreciate everything you shared with us. Um, imagine the possibilities. Because of your direction, Mayor, and the, the administration and, you know, the school district and their representative here tonight and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and their leadership and everybody working together. That's how I think we're seeing change. The change that I saw from as a child growing up here, I didn't like. And I think for the first time in a long time, I feel really positive about our community because you guys have taken control of change and you're shaping it, not only in our youth, but in our businesses, in our neighborhoods. And I, as a resident, I just want to thank all of you, even council. Sometimes you, you know, you can't grow unless you let go of something and I think that's what we're seeing. As an example, during the parks, if you let go just a little bit and you gain so much more and, and the vision that we're seeing and, and the things that we know, especially financially, I wish, I know Steve's excited about, you know, ten years out, what can happen in, in all of our park systems is pretty exciting. So, Mayor, I thank you and your administration and council and the community.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good to see everyone this evening. And with that, uh, kind of, I don't think there is anything left to say, so I'll, uh, pass it on.
All right. Well, it's passed to me. I want to thank everyone for, uh, coming down here this evening. Uh, the one thing that I, uh, kind of been saying to a couple of people and a lot to myself, uh, in the last couple of months is that, you know what, in five years, you're not going to recognize this city. This is going to be a whole new ballgame. Uh, and it is going, the next five years is going to do so much, it's, it's actually going to lay out what this city is going to be like for the next, uh, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. Because that is going to set the stage for everything else to come on down the line. I, that's my personal opinion. I, uh, we have no other official business coming before us tonight, uh, so I would therefore entertain a moment, a, uh, a, a motion for adjournment. Mr. Bailey. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and second by Mr. Tanner for adjournment. Mr. Churchill, please call the roll.
Gray.
Yes.
Yes, Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes. All right. Let's see everyone here in our next meeting.